Well, good evening and welcome to the May 23rd, 2018 regular meeting of the St. Vrain Valley Schools Board of Education. If you would, please join us in saying the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. And Emery, would you mind calling the roll, please?
Sure. All right, Dr. Marty.
Present.
Ms. Pierce.
Here.
Ms. Ragland.
Here.
Ms. Seigrist.
Here.
Ms. Cisco here and Mr. Smith.
Here. And Mr. Erns is absent, excused.
Yes.
All right, thank you very much. Any changes to the agenda or did anyone sign up to speak?
Neither.
I didn't see anything.
Nope.
Okay, great. The one change I'd suggest to the, I'd like to do to the agenda is before we go into the reports, we do have a couple of new hires and I'd like to give Ella the opportunity to do those introductions because some of them have children here. And it might be approaching bedtime.
It's my bedtime.
Okay, so we have two out of three here tonight and so I'm going to introduce you to Russell Fox. If Russell will come up, please. You may recognize Russell. He's currently at Erie High School. He received his Doctorate in Education Administrative Leadership from the University of Colorado. He's been a language arts teacher at Erie High School. He is the Director of the AP Capstone Project. He is also the AP Department Head. Along with that, he was recognized as the St. Vrain Encore Teacher Award. So, an awesome person to be in this position and we're just excited that he's joining us in as a Dean at Coal Ridge Middle School. So I know Liza's here to support him and she's very excited to have him join the team. So I'm going to turn it over to Russell.
Very good.
Yeah, thanks for having me. I'm really excited to take on this new position and I've been a St. Vrain lifer from kindergarten through 12th grade and then my entire professional career. So, you know, it's a good place and I'm excited to expand my role. Thanks so much.
Very good.
Yeah, I should.
Yeah, that's always a good idea, right?
Definitely.
This is my wife, Lindsay Fox. She's a math teacher in the district and our young son was throwing a fit before we left the house so we left him at home with Grandma and Grandpa.
Well, there you go.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's bad enough when the board members throw fits. We don't need anyone else. We don't need anyone else doing that, so. All right, Ella?
All right, Gina Truehill. Gina, will you come up, please? So Gina was selected as the Coordinator of Special Education. She's been with the district. She has a Master's education in instructional curriculum. She's also certified as an elementary teacher and a special ed teacher. She has 15 years' experience in the field of K-8 special education. And in her current position, she is the Instructional Coach for Special Ed with an area of focus in literacy. And I know Laura speaks highly and again Laura is here to support Gina in this new role and she's excited she's joining the team. And so I'll turn it over to Gina.
Thank you. Thank you for this opportunity. I am loving all of my St. Vrain years. I've been in this district for 10 years. So I'm very fortunate to have been able to study under Laura's leadership and Diane Lauer's leadership. And as I went through my program, my family is here. Jason Truehill, who works for DTS. My daughters, who I just applied with technology to keep them quiet. Ava and Sophie and then my son Brayden, who is a freshman at Erie High School and he has Ms. Fox for geometry.
Awesome.
So, thank you again for this opportunity and I can't wait to serve St. Vrain in a new role and get to meet more people. Thank you.
Well, very good. Thank you for taking that on.
All right, and then Marty Stevenson could not be here. She is in Durango School District. She has been in her role in special education for the last 11 years. She's Exceptional Student Services Lead Teacher and Administrator for the last four years. So we're very excited. Her husband is also a teacher and so we're hoping he is going to move into one of our K-8 schools. So, we're working on that.
Very good.
All right, thank you.
Ella, thank you very much. Okay. That then brings us to our reports and I think 5.1 would be Finance and Audit Report. Greg, you're gonna?
Yeah, I'm just going to introduce Heather Parrish. She's our Chairperson for our Finance and Audit Committee and she is going to tell you all about the fun we had this year.
Great. Heather, thanks so much for being here.
Thank you. Thank you. So I'm just going to hit a few of the highlights that over the course of the year. Of course, the district's doing a lot of great things and always busy in something. You know, one of the key things that as a Finance and Audit Committee member you look at is the audit. So, that was clean with no material weaknesses, which is great. We've had that for the last couple of years. So the district's continuing on that path, which is really, you know, really great to see. We always have a continued focus on cash, as most areas do. So we've implemented a new P-card process this year. So that was something that Shelley worked on and got that rolled out. So that's good, just to tighten up controls in there. That's something that we continue to look at. The new paying agent from Wells Fargo to UMB. So that's kind of in process. So we hope to see some improvements more on their end this year in helping out the district so it's not so burdensome. Obviously, the district continues to grow, which is great to see. Two new schools opening next year, which is really fantastic, along with the Innovation Center. So, huge changes coming, you know, more students, all that kind of stuff. It's great, you know, it's great to see this district continue to grow and, you know, thrive in the community. So, a couple of the things that we focused or we did new this year, which I thought was really great and I would like to continue next year is we actually went and visited some of the schools. So that's something that, you know, for, you know, me, I don't have children in the school district so I haven't been in a school in a really long time. So it's great to see, you know, what they have and the resources they have now. We went to Centennial Elementary, we went to Altona and we went to Erie High School. I laugh because one of my favorite things was seeing the bikes in Altona in the libraries. You can just sit and pedal away and get your physical activity and read. I thought it was amazing. I loved that. Jane and I were talking about that a lot. So, some of the other things that we just continue to look at, we've continued to try to learn about that district. You know, we have new people coming in as committee members. So some of the focus items we looked at this year was the bond construction update. We looked at the benefits that the district's providing to the employees. We looked through the athletics and fine arts and, you know, heard a little bit about the Hundred Mile Club to promote physical activity, which is great to hear about. We looked at Leadership St. Vrain. We got some information on that. And the assessment curriculum and not having a whole lot of exposure to that, I was a little bit shocked about how long that process, you know, it's a long process. It's just, and it's a diligent process. It was fascinating to kind of hear that that's a seven-year process. So that's, you know, that's a long time and, you know, it takes three years to figure, you know, get a decision on stuff and how the textbook renewal process works. So it's really fascinating to hear that kind of stuff that's happening in the district that you don't normally hear about. So that's the, those are the things that help us keep us informed. And then we can kind of take that and then figure out, you know, questions to ask and, you know, help the teams on, you know, wear, you know, controls and items like that. So, overall, the team's awesome to work with. They're really great. Greg and Shelley and Jane and everybody else and Candy and the extended team. And Joey and Paula, you know, help us a lot. So I think, you know, we've got a good partnership between all three areas, between the committee members, the board and the staff. So, just want to thank you for allowing me to be on the committee and wish you the best of luck as you close up the year and move into the next school year.
Well, we really appreciate you doing what you do. Truly, the board could not represent the community the way we're supposed to without your involvement and support. So we deeply appreciate that. Anything that you wanted to, would want to say to or ask of the board directly?
I don't think so. You know, I think anything we have, we kind of address with Joey and Paula. You know, there's great communication and dialogue between all of us. So, I don't have any questions. Do you have any questions for me?
Any other, any questions, comments? Sure?
Hi, and thank you for your work. I was, I'm interested in the new P-card processes. Is that a big problem or is that a significant, a substantive problem for the district?
It's not. It's just one of those areas, you know, being cash is always a focus. You don't want cash kind of dripping out of the district from various little things, you know? It's, and it's one of the, it's just putting in a tighter process. You know, we've, it's something we've always focused on. I think we've been, we put in cash procedures, you know, years ago. And it's just, as you just continue to tighten those controls and just make sure that you've got tighter processes and, you know, people know exactly the policies they're supposed to follow. And then they're, if they don't follow the policy, there's a, you know, there's a consequence for that.
And are there any, were there any users of cards that had their cards revoked this last year? I mean, is that a?
Yes.
Yes.
Greater than 10?
No.
Greater than five?
No.
Sounds like a quiz show here.
It's been very few and isolated and...
But there's an important thing. It used to be a real problem.
Right.
Until these measures were put into place, people would be lulled into thinking it was their personal credit card. And so, it's like a school resource officer. When you have them in the building, you don't have the incidents. You can't say because you don't have the incidents, you shouldn't have the prevention. And that's exactly what we have said and through my directive. It's, I want that as tight as possible without being onerous. And so that's where a lot of these guidelines have come from. Because I remember back in the day when people were abusing those at a level that was just unacceptable. So, I'm glad to hear you say that it's less than five today and that's because of the restrictions that we've put into place.
Yeah, we also make them take a test before they get their P-card every year. So it's, it's, there's a pool of questions and it randomly pulls in the pool of questions and you have to get above an 80% in order to get your card. And so that just, I believe that's just more of a form of education than a qualification. We just want to make sure they know and understand the requirements of appropriate use of a P-card before, before they have one in their hands. We had one person self-report. They self-admitted and handed the card right then, so, yeah.
Well, I'm happy to hear that the number of infractions is a small number. And I too would attribute that to having a good internal system. I have one other question. With regard to the engagement of the outside auditors, do you have a, and I note that we're entering the second year of a five-year, or the second of a five-year contract?
I think it's the fifth year of a five-year.
Or fifth year of a, yeah, fifth year of a five-year contract. Does the committee have a recommendation on the length of time that we should stay with a particular auditor, our current auditor?
We actually just started talking about that in actually the meeting we had on Monday. It's something that we need to kind of think about whether we want to, you know, if it's something that we would recommend an extension or we would recommend going out for RFP in the fall, so.
And is there an industry standard with regard to the length of time you stick with a single auditor?
I think five years, I think tends to be the industry standard. And then you might get a year extension and then you kind of go out for RFP. You might, in the RFP, you may come out saying, you know, the auditors that you have on board now are the ones that you want to keep for another five years. But you kind of do, five-year cycle tends to be the average.
Yeah, so we stayed with the same team and the same company this last RFP, primarily because that's when we were switching to infinite visions. And so, you know, going to a new financial system, you don't really necessarily want to change auditors during that process and have to come up to, have to bring them up to speed. And we're very satisfied with Ruben Brown and the team we have. One of the options would be to change partners within the same firm. And so that's an option as well if you want a fresh look, a fresh set of eyes to look at stuff. And so, as we go through it, we would, you know, we, when we went through that five years ago, we actually did have Ruben Brown propose staying with the same team or switching partners. And as the people that were in the room and, you know, we had Finance and Audit Committee members in there and they all felt like staying with the same partner. And I think Paula and Joey were probably involved in that discussion as well. It was just decided it was best to stay with that same team, that same firm at that point in time. As we go out for another one, we may be interested in changing partners. We may want to move to a completely different firm, but that's just a fresh RFP.
And wouldn't mind that?
We would probably look at it in the fall, starting it, because we'd have to get things ironed out for them to be out in June for interim field work.
Yeah, there is a benefit to having not only a fresh set of eyes but a fresh philosophy as they, as a firm would approach. They can, you know, they focus on different items. It's a way to progressively improve even though it's a little painful to switch auditors. I certainly understand that piece. But, you know, that's something that I know you're attentive to. But it just, it was part of the report and it was one of the things I noted.
Yeah, it's definitely a decision point we'll have in the coming months.
Five years have gone fast.
Yeah, they have.
But I would like to thank Heather and all the members of the committee because they do help us tremendously. They bring new ideas to us. They, you know, think of things that we haven't thought of. We have, you know, maybe not an issue, but we want to do a process improvement or something along those lines. And they're very receptive and very helpful in coming up with new concepts for us.
Paula, do you have a question?
Yeah, I just, I wanted to thank you, Heather, for your, I think you've had two terms on the Finance and Audit Committee and you've stepping up for a third, which we very much appreciate. And just reiterate what Greg said about being in the room and actually hearing the financial speak between all of you professionals and our professionals. And the details that you guys really do get into, you know, about how to best financially manage the assets of the public and the district. So, we really appreciate your time and your insight and your input. I know I learn something every time I'm in the room. I think Joey does too. So thank you very much. We really truly appreciate it.
Heather, I just want to thank you also and I just want to note that you and the other community members are volunteers. And so thank you for volunteering your time all year long, but also for being here tonight.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. That then brings us to the report on partnerships and grants. And Hillary, well...
I'll introduce Hillary and then she'll come up.
Oh, great, all right, yeah. Yeah, because I don't think we've met Hillary.
You've not met Hillary.
So if you do an introduction, that'd be terrific.
That's great. So, good evening. This evening, it is my pleasure to introduce Hillary Watson Tag, Director of Competitive Grants and Strategic Partnerships. I've had the great fortune of working with Hillary in a previous life and she's incredibly talented in her philanthropic work. Hillary is energetic and uses her talents to support students in public education and that is just a beautiful combination. She keeps us hopping with new and exciting opportunities and we are so glad that she reached out to us this year and wanted to be part of our winning team. And so Hillary, this evening, is going to update us on the work that she has done since she's been with us in January.
Very good. Welcome, Hillary.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the board and Superintendent Haddad, who might have stepped out for a moment. I'd like to begin by thanking the board for their interest in this work and for offering me the opportunity to present to the, on the district's efforts with respect to partnerships and grants. As Jackie mentioned, I am new to St. Vrain, having spent the past decade working in philanthropy and partnership development. And I'm fortunate to have spent my entire career in youth development and education, including early childhood, K-12 and higher ed. I am especially grateful to have been offered the opportunity to come to St. Vrain. Before I started, several individuals in the district commented that when you first arrive here in St. Vrain, you feel like you have joined a Super Bowl team and I have certainly found that to be true. Since I began in January, we have worked to build on the deep and well-developed partnerships that Superintendent Haddad and district staff have established in the past decade or more. Successful philanthropy and partnership work is rooted in strong relationships, strong programming and a strong reputation. And St. Vrain has all three of those very solidly in place. Over the past five months, our team has submitted $5.9 million in competitive grant requests supporting a wide range of initiatives, many in partnership with other organizations. And some of those requests include the Colorado Opportunity Scholarship Initiative in partnership with Front Range Community College. And that work is to support enhanced post-secondary counseling and tutoring for our P-tech students. The National Science Foundation in partnership with the University of Colorado Boulder and Adams 12 Five-Star Schools to support the creation of a computer science pathway within the Niwot feeder system. The Succeeds Prize, which recognizes exceptional STEM schools across the state. Open IDO in support of the district's Mobile Technology Laboratory. Crestone Peak Resources also in support of the district's Mobile Technology Laboratory. The Robotics Education and Competition Foundation to support further expansion of St. Vrain's robotics programs as well as to support rural districts as they work to establish their own programs. The United States Department of Education Supporting Effective Educator Development Grant Program. Sorry for the long name there. It's also known as the SEEDS Program in partnership with the University of Kansas. And that is to support professional development related to design thinking and kindergarten through 12th grade STEM integration. And as, we also have the Education First Social-Emotional Learning Fund to further deepen our teachers and our counselors' skills in supporting the needs of our students. We have a pending grant before the Colorado Department of Education expelled an ATRE student services program. And finally, we also applied for the Caring for Colorado Foundation in support of social-emotional interventions for our students with disabilities. So since January, we have received 834,000 of those $5.9 million in requests, including $10,000 from the Colorado Department of Education Computer Science Professional Development Grant Program, which supports post-secondary tuition and intensive professional development programs for computer science instruction. We've received $50,000 from the Temple Hoin Buell Foundation to support preschool tuition assistance for our youngest learners. $26,000 from Google in support of professional development in computer science. $84,000 from the National Security Agency Gen Cyber Grant Program to support professional development in cybersecurity instruction. $530,000 from the Colorado Department of Education Counselor Core Grant Program to support additional counseling positions at several district schools. $128,979 from Early Milestones Colorado. And that's to support the creation of an early childhood teacher cadet program called PTCH. And last but not least, $5,000 from the Polis Foundation in support of the new Innovation Center Makerspace. In addition to competitive grants, we have worked to expand and deepen St. Vrain's many existing relationships with corporations, nonprofit organizations and grant-making organizations, as well as to establish some new relationships. We have met with representatives from the Mortgage Foundation, the Daniels Fund, the Rose Community Foundation, Noble Energy, the Lark Foundation, Kaiser Permanente, the Colorado Education Initiative, MindSpark, Medtronic, the Colorado School of Mines, the Longmont Museum, the Community Foundation of Boulder County, the Longmont Community Foundation, the Colorado Technology Association, Seagate, Micron and several others. The district has a holistic approach to partnering with organizations. So some of these conversations are focused around bringing expertise into our district that will benefit our students. Some are focused around recruiting mentors or volunteers. And then other conversations are focused around philanthropy. I'm very excited to see where all of these conversations lead, given how ambitious St. Vrain's goals are and the speed at which we are advancing public education here in St. Vrain. The sky is really the limit. Finally, I would like to acknowledge and express my gratitude for the incredibly warm welcome that I have received here, starting with Superintendent Haddad and Deputy Superintendent Kapushin, each of the Assistant Superintendents, all of the school-level staff members and the administrative teams and particularly Finance, which is incredibly diligent in monitoring all of this work. It has been a rewarding and very exciting few months and I can't wait to see what develops over the next several years. And at this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Joey and I had the opportunity to meet Hillary before our meeting tonight and I can tell you she brings energy and experience and a very high level of competence. Any questions from board members? Going once, going twice? Hillary, anything you'd want to ask us?
Well, I just, I truly appreciate your interest and I would welcome your ideas when it comes to philanthropy and partnership development. It's certainly a very much a team effort, this work. And so to whatever degree each of you has an idea for a new partnership or things we could do, I would certainly welcome those.
Well, the work you're doing is incredibly important, not simply financially, but also the relationships that we continue to build throughout the communities that we serve. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're pleased that you're here.
I did not mention the best grant, no.
Sure. If I turn that on. Yeah, we were awarded the best grant, about $2 million. That investment goes into Main Street School. So, yeah. So, the district is funding about $5 million of that project and the best grant will fund about $2 million, so. Good project, actually. We've been working on that one for some years.
All right. Hillary, thanks so much for being here tonight.
Thank you.
And thanks for all your hard work.
Thank you.
All right. That brings us then to the district financial statements for April. We did meet with Greg at 6:30 this evening and the board had an opportunity to review those or walk through those. Greg, you want to hit some of the highlights and then we'll see if there are any other questions?
Sure. I think when we look at the general fund, again, the dashboard, if executive summary is the first page two and page three of the financials so people can get a quick look at what's going on. I think just in general, our general fund operating budget is well within budget at this point. We don't see any issues with it. There's a couple, three funds, there's three funds that we're looking at to monitor. Because we are growing, there's times when we're implementing programs and revenues and expenditures are both going up. And so when we do our amended budget in January, we may still see something go above that. And so, in three funds, we're kind of seeing that where revenues and expenditures are going up. And so we may be back with second amended budgets for that in June. But again, none of the funds are in financial distress. They've got the revenues that offset the expenditures. And then we do have one grant, a couple of grants that we're monitoring as they wrap up just to make sure that we don't over-expend and that we use the money to its fullest. We don't want to give any back, but we don't want to over-expend, so.
Any further questions of Greg? Once, twice, okay. Greg, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Yep. All right, then that would bring us to the introduction of the superintendent's proposed budget for all funds for fiscal year 2019. Tony?
Greetings.
Good evening.
All right, so tonight I've got the privilege of introducing the superintendent's proposed budget for St. Vrain Valley Schools for the 1819 fiscal year. As you know, this budget is the comprehensive spending plan tracking all resources and expenditures for all funds used to educate our students and support the vision and mission of the district from July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2019. I want to thank all the individuals who were involved in the development of this budget as it is truly a team effort and includes the cooperation of a broad swath of district staff, including members of HR and Finance, department heads and their secretaries, building principals and their secretaries, of course Greg Feath or CFO, Dr. Haddad and our Finance and Audit Committee. As you know, last week at the board study session, we had an opportunity to delve a little bit deeper into this budget, particularly from the general fund perspective. There have been no changes to the amounts presented at that session. But for the benefit of the public and any viewers at home, I'd like to provide a brief recap of the general fund budget changes compared to last year and make myself available to the board to answer any questions regarding any of the other fund budgets as well. Before I do so, I would like to preface this information with a reminder that this proposed budget is based on conservative and preliminary estimates available and is also based on our zero-growth K-12 FTE projection, a methodology we've spoken about previously in our meetings and study sessions. Thus, in January of 2019, I will bring forward an amended budget proposal that will contain adjustments to this budget based on actual changes to assess valuation, additional revenues based on student growth, new expenditure needs we've allocated in order to further address that student growth, other local, state and federal funding revenue sources and expenditure changes. So, to recap the general fund changes, we are proposing that in the FY19 budget, the district will plan to spend down fund balance by approximately $8.9 million. dollars, compared to the FY18 amended budget, which contained a budgeted spend-down of six-point-one million dollars. This change is a result of increased expenditures over increased revenues, like we talked about the other evening. Compared to FY18, the FY19 represents approximately sixteen-point-one million additional dollars in revenue. This is mostly due to an increase in per pupil revenue from the State's Public School Finance Act, Total Program Formula, and in part, the reversal of a large one-time allocation from revenue to the capital reserve fund last year, and in part, the, excuse me, as well as a two percent projected increase in assessed valuation. This would generate additional revenue for our mill levy overrides, and that was about eight hundred thousand, as we spoke about before. This budget also contains an increase in expenditures of nineteen million dollars over the FY18 expenditure budget, which is primarily a result of increased compensation for teachers and staff per the second year of the previously negotiated compensation agreement with the St. Vrain Valley Education Association, as well as additional teachers and support staff for the opening of Grandview Elementary School and Soaring Heights PK-8, as well as other anticipated needs throughout the rest of the district. These changes mean the district, again, will plan to increase its previously budgeted spend-down of general fund fund balance by about two-point-eight million dollars, from six-point-one million in FY18 to eight-point-nine in FY19. Finally, I would also like to point out a new budget summary schedule that we've prepared on page six, that I hope will help provide a more comprehensive overview of the budgeted revenue and expenditures for all funds, the details of which can be found on the individual fund pages throughout the rest of the document. We will make this budget document available on our website at svvsd.org, and a printed copy available for public inspection here at the district offices. The public input and comment period begins today, and we will have a public hearing at the next board meeting on June thirteenth. Pending any changes, this budget will then be brought forward to the June twenty-seventh board meeting for formal adoption. It would be my pleasure to address any questions, or answer any issues or address any issues at this time.
Don, anything you'd want to add, or any comments?
No, I appreciate everything.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You did a great job summarizing the changes and the numbers, and we did talk about some of the programs that are really very exciting that this budget will allow us to do. Really looking forward to that. Were there any other questions from board members? What's that? Indeed. Dick?
Well, I have one. With regard to our funded pupil count that we're looking at for, that this budget is based on, at what point do we do the adjustments based on what our actual increase?
Sure. So from a revenue standpoint, we'll do that in the amended budget, because what we do is we certify our October count, I think it's around November tenth. That information gets to the Colorado Department of Education, and then they adjust our equalization payment that comes from the state from that point going forward. And so once we have that official certified funded pupil count acknowledged by the Colorado Department of Education, those additional dollars will start to flow, and of course, will reflect that in the amended budget in January. From an expenditure standpoint, we actually continue to monitor the enrollment numbers of all of our schools, even starting now, going forward, and as we get closer to the opening of school in the fall, we become aware of hotspots and needs where they arise. We meet on a weekly basis, the administration and the superintendent's cabinet bring forward and evaluate those needs and allocate additional FTE and resources to the schools to ensure those needs are met when they come about.
Before we're amending the budget?
Yep.
Yes.
Yep, exactly. And then when I come forward in January, all of those expenditures and changes are reflected in that budget.
And last year, the funded pupil count, or do we anticipate, I read somewhere that was fifty-two-point-five increase in funded pupil count? Is that correct?
Overall, this budget represents an actual, what we've done is we've budgeted a decrease, and that's because the district side, as we talked about, is based on zero growth. And so essentially, our district side was almost nothing. We zeroed out the K-12 student counts, added just a little bit for some of our programs and whatnot. But what we do actually manage is the charter school projected growth that they send to us, we actually don't adjust those numbers at all. And their increase was seventy, which was well over the amount that we budgeted on the district side. So what that resulted in is, on a net basis, a decreased in terms of total funded pupil count at the district level. But if you were to separate the two, it'd show a modest increase on our side, and then a larger increase on the charter side.
Thank you.
Yep.
I just have a quick comment. Tony, I just wanted to thank you. You did a great presentation to the Financion Audit Committee on Monday of the proposed budget.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for that.
And any, we already had a report from them, but no other comments that they might have had, Paula, anything on the budget?
No, it was a pretty thorough review of it. And they, you know, they were very supportive of it, and there was a lot of conversation, not only in the numbers themselves, but in the presentation of the budget, appropriating all of the money, and so, no, they were very supportive of the document.
They were. Each year, Tony looks for ways to refine the presentation, and I do think it, each year, it gets better and better. So thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. All right, Tony, thanks very much. Appreciate it.
Bet.
Okay, we have a number of consent items. Six-point-one is approval of purchase of Microsoft software licenses. Six-point-two, approval of purchase of Apple Volume Purchase Program credits for education. Six-point-three, approval of recommendation to hire coordinator for special ed. Six-point-four, approval of recommendation to hire coordinator for special ed. And six-point-five, approval to, approval of recommendation to hire dean of students for Colridge Middle School. Inasmuch as Michelle sat through this entire meeting, it seems to me we ought to ask her at least a few questions, but I don't know, that's up to the rest of the board. Anybody wish to have any of these items polled?
No.
If you, okay, I don't think we, all right, then, hang on one second, I'll ask for a motion to approve, and then if we have any questions, we can.
So moved.
So by Joey? By Karen? And would you please call for the vote?
All right, thanks, Paul. Dr. Marty?
Yes.
Ms. Pierce?
Aye.
Ms. Ragland?
Yes.
Ms. Seacrest?
Aye.
Ms. Cisco?
Aye.
And Mr. Smith?
Yes, thank you. And Michelle, we have talked about, we have talked about the volume purchase program and so on in the past. Any comments that you would want to add, as long as you've stayed with us to?
I was going to say, I get to be with you guys tonight. I don't have to be, I get to be.
We've already approved your agenda, your items, so you don't need to butter us up there.
Just for your awareness, the two major reasons that this purchase was brought to you, one is because of the exciting approval from our leadership cabinet to provide additional iPads for our elementary students, so part of this is to fund the additional apps that they need, and a portion of this is to cover the new apps for our two new schools that are opening in the fall. So both of those are just really exciting opportunities for St. Vrain, and I'm excited and happy that we can do this for them.
Well, you know, it really, it's so exciting to see a district technology services department that is so supportive of what's happening in the classroom, and for you guys to recognize, because when I first came on this board, that area seemed to think that they were the reason they were here, rather than the classroom. No, really, that's the case. They thought they were the means to the end, not, or they thought they were the end, not the means to the end. And you guys have clearly just been so supportive of the schools and what's happening with the instruction and assessment and the need for individualization, so it's just incredible.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for all your work.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah, thanks, Michelle.
Very good. Okay, that brings us then to our action items for the evening. And seven-point-one would be the approval of the 2013 Charter School Mill Levy Override Memorandum of Understanding Extensions. And Greg, I know we've been through this in study session, we have discussed it, but if you would just kind of summarize it for anyone who might be watching, or for those of us that are old and forgot some of it.
Sure, so, no problem. When we passed the mill levy override?
I didn't point any fingers.
She did. Joey did.
Oh, Joey did.
Joey's pointed a finger.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
That's all right. So when we passed the mill levy override back in 2012, part of what we agreed to with our charter schools was that we would distribute a portion of those mill levy overrides based on the October count, funded pupil count for each of those charter schools compared to the district overall total. And we signed an agreement with them to do that. So we locked in the percentage that each school would get based off of their funded pupil count during that year. We set that term for five years, so it's coming up, it expires in June of this year. And so what's happened is, since then, the state legislature has come back through and said, we have to share those revenues on the funded pupil count percentage each year. So whatever their funded pupil count percentage is in that year is how much we share with them. And so it's a little different than what we were doing it, the way we were doing it. It will impact some schools, depending on how much they've increased in enrollment or decreased in enrollment, but we have set that agreement. You guys approved that back on April eleventh, and so we have to have a bridge from June of eighteen until July of nineteen. And so we went back to our charter schools and asked them to just sign an extension so that we would keep it based on the same percentage as it was in the original memorandum of understanding. And all six of them have signed it at this point, and so we're just asking you guys to approve it and for you to sign it tonight.
All right. Are there any other follow-up questions?
Just a quick question, in the packet, the St. Vrain Valley, or St. Vrain Community Montessori School had not signed.
Yes, so we waited until three-thirty on Friday, and they were promising to send it, but we typically send those out by two o'clock, so they brought it down that afternoon, but just not in time for the meeting.
Paula?
So just real quick, Greg, this just begs, the question is, where do we stand with the oh-eight distribution? Is that locked in for the?
Yeah, this, this understanding covered both the 2008 and the 2012.
Okay.
So we're fine with that, it's just a matter of, and then next year?
Next year, the new?
The new law, the new stuff goes into effect, and it will impact both the 2008 and 2012.
Okay, great, thank you.
All right. So if there are no further questions, I'll ask for a motion to approve?
So moved.
By Paula? Second by Joey, I think?
Karen.
Karen. And Emery, would you please call for the vote?
Dr. Marty?
Yes.
Ms. Pierce?
Aye.
Ms. Ragland?
Yes.
Ms. Seacrest?
Aye.
Ms. Cisco?
Aye.
And Mr. Smith?
Yes. Well, that's good, now I don't have to scratch my name off all those contracts that I've already signed. Well, I'm just trying to be efficient. All right. So that then takes us to seven-point-two, approval of the School-to-Work Alliance Program. Now, we did get that thirty-some-page document about ten minutes before the board, so there's no excuses for any board members not to have read that. So would you just kind of summarize that?
Absolutely, and so thank you so much, members of the board, Dr. Hadad. The swap program is an optional program, and we have opted to provide this very valuable service for our community students for the last twenty years. It provides employability, skills, training, internships, job shadowing, and the funds that we receive, about four-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand dollars from the state and the vocational rehabilitation department of the state as well, really ensure that we follow some guidelines, make our reports, and provide a high-quality program for our students. So at this time, we are asking for your approval, so that we can sign this binding contract and continue our work.
Questions? Paula?
So, and this is something, Diane, we've seen every year for some time, and this has a many, many, multi-year history of success, twenty years of success with finding employment and placement for so many of our students.
Absolutely.
So I'm not worried at all that I got it ten minutes before the meeting, because I have a lot of faith in the process and in the program.
Yeah, the state was a little bit late getting it to us this year, and so they, like, you know, Greg saying, we were able to get it, but not provide to the Friday packet. So, but there really have not been any substantial changes to the contracts over time. I'd say two years ago was some of the most substantial changes, when the law around data privacy went into effect, and so that section was changed a couple of years ago to reflect the new law around personal identifiable information of students.
Okay.
Very good.
Thank you.
Dick?
Diane, does the district invest additional money along with the state to help support this program?
We do invest some, and then some in kind, but this does pay the bulk of the program costs, the personnel costs, and some small other materials and programming.
Yeah, it's a wonderful program. I've had a number of former students who've been tremendously helped through this program.
That's good. Okay. Any other questions? No? All right, then I'll ask for a motion to approve?
So moved.
By Paula? Second by Karen? And would you please call for the vote?
I will. All right, Dr. Marty?
Yes.
Ms. Pierce?
Aye.
Ms. Ragland?
Yes.
Ms. Seacrest?
Aye.
Ms. Cisco?
Aye.
And Mr. Smith?
Yes. Thank you very much. Okay. Then seven-point-three is a recommendation to approve an amendment, the construction manager general contractor contract for the Niwot High renovation project.
Right. Members of the board, seven-point-three is just that, a request to begin construction Tuesday, actually, if this is approved. We've been working on the design effort for Niwot High School, and this is phase one of a two-phase project. I will come back in the fall and bring phase two, which is about a five-million-dollar change. But this particular phase, first phase, it clears out the upstairs, if you can picture Niwot High School, as you go down the stairs as you first walk in, it takes out counseling, the classrooms that are there on the other side of counseling, and then it also moves special education upstairs. And it moves one other program, but it slipped in my mind, but nonetheless, it also gets the asbestos out of our way. And so that's the beginning of really the major project, which will occur in the fall.
Brian, you know I'm going to ask this question, is the contingency included?
No. This particular one, I did not include contingency, and I did that on purpose, because it's a two-phase project. I expect them to tighten the belt, if you will, and if we run into a problem, I can easily work with phase two, but it's just my way of tightening things up.
Thank you.
So you've done this before, is what you're saying?
Couple of times.
Okay. Good. Any other questions? All right, so I'll ask for a motion to approve then? By Joey?
Second.
By the quiet Karen?
I can smell the paint.
And?
At Niwot.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And so, would you please call for the vote?
Yes, thanks, Paul. All right, Dr. Marty?
Yes.
Ms. Pierce?
Aye.
Ms. Ragland?
Yes.
Ms. Seacrest?
Aye.
Ms. Cisco?
Aye.
And Mr. Smith?
Yes. All right, well, Greg, welcome back for the recommendation to approve the demonstration of compliance for supplementing, not supplanting, under every Student Succeeds Act.
Great. So, excuse me, Congress has gone back and changed the way that they evaluate supplant, or supplement, not supplant, which is basically the terminology for, if they give us money, we don't just take, use it to pay for teacher salaries that we would have been regularly paid for. It has to be in addition to what we're providing to other schools. And so the way they changed it in No Child Left Behind, they did a fairly complicated comparability study, and you had to report your expenses on every school, and they took and they had margins and percentages and a whole bunch of other stuff. They've redefined that, and so what they're asking is for this demonstration of compliance that just kind of outlines how you are staffing your buildings, how you are funding your buildings, to make sure they're comparable, and then the title funds are in addition to that, so that we're putting money into our title, into our title schools above and beyond what we commit to other schools. And so this demonstration of compliance kind of shows how we allocate, and so as we go through it, I'll just read some of these things fairly quickly. We obviously go through a lot more than this in a lot more detail, but we kept it We obviously go through a lot more than this in a lot more detail, but we kept it, um, fairly basic for them. If they have more information, they're welcome to, to come back to us. But, um, we staff to the needs of the expected classroom sizes, so we have staffing plans. And those staffing plans are primarily on a student ratio, student-teacher ratio. But we do give other, um, funded, what we, what we call FTE, which is full-time equivalent, but other support for, um, student enrollment, class size ratio, small school determination, free and reduced lunch percentage, students on individualized learning plans, ILPs. Um, and then we also give each school at a certain level, um, a standard discretionary budget for supplies, professional development, printing, those types of things. It comes on a per-pupil basis. So, each level is a different amount. But each school gets the same amount per student at that level. In addition, there, what we do is we pull out costs associated with the aging condition of a, of a school, such as utilities, custodial services, operations and maintenance. We centralize that so that people, so that schools don't have to use their discretionary budget to pay for those things. You don't have, if you have an older building, utility costs are higher. It doesn't impact how much money we're giving you for your normal operations of the school. Um, so that's another thing that we do. Um, we, costs associated with transporting students to and from school are centralized again. So that if you have a school that's in a rural situation, um, their transportation costs are typically higher. And so, we take that to the central level so they're not concerned with this. We also do this because we want principals to focus on their school and the operations of their school, what's going on in their school and not having to worry about budget and how it works for transportation, for custodial, for utilities. So, that's part of why we do what we do. Um, we also do, our technology is centralized to ensure standard levels of devices and services across schools. And then we do additional allocations of, of, um, teachers and resources for special programming such as, um, IB, AP, STEM and Focus. And then we do additional allocations of FTE for special education, English Language Proficiency Act, READ Act. All of those come through based on the student demographics for that school. And so, depending on how much they have, how much of a need they have for special education, those resources come in from a centralized location. We also talk a little about, about our salaries and benefits. We budget that, uh, the dollars are budgeted for at the central level, at the district level. And it's based on actual salary by position of occupied and average salary for positions that are vacant. But we do that again so that principals, primarily we do it so that principals don't have to say, well, I've got this much money. I can either hire one teacher or a, one experienced teacher, or I can hire two new teach, new teachers. That's not how we do it. We give them the staff they need based on the staffing plan and then whatever those dollars are tracked at the, at the district level and we budget appropriately. Um, and then the other thing that we do that Tony talked a little bit about is grade level relief. We may give that in the fall depending on what actual enrollment is. I think that kind of summarizes that document, but those are the things that they're looking for that says, okay, you're doing everything standardized. You're centralizing stuff that, that makes it comparable and then title dollars flow on top of that.
Very good. All right. So, uh, this board needs to then attest that, uh, staff is compliant. And, um, anybody want to ask any further questions before we give that attestation? Seems fine to me.
So, so Greg, you're, um, there, there are a series of formula-driven and discretionary items that are listed here. Are they listed in any priority order, dollar order?
No.
From top to bottom?
No. Um, there was, CDE gave us some, some sample language and so I just kind of followed some of that and then included other stuff as I, that I thought was necessary to demonstrate how our district does it.
And the title, so, we, you go through this process, uh, that applies to all of our schools. And then the title one dollars, as you said, is in addition to these discretionary and fo- formula-driven decisions that we're making on a school-by-school basis. Is that correct?
That's correct. And, and what we do, um, it's a recent change, but we give the schools how much money they get and then from that, they can determine whether or not they want additional, um, teaching or staffing resources or whether they want to use some of those funds for supplies and materials or something else. Principals have that discretion to use those title one dollars however they see fit inside of their own school.
Yeah, just the title one dollars.
Yeah, I would say. And, and, and it has to be verified by Patrick Kilcullen, who's in charge of our title one. So, it's not like they have complete discretion on those dollars. There is oversight in terms of compliance to the grant, ability to, you, you know, what the program's gonna be, what it's gonna look like and whether or not that's appropriate for their setting.
Yeah, very collaborative process. Paula?
Thanks, Bob. I just, I'm a little bit off topic here, but I just wanted to make a, a comment that this is sort of a textbook argument against student-based budgeting, which we haven't heard a lot about lately, but it was a buzzword for a lot of years. Because this methodology that we use actually gets to equity and parity of resources throughout the schools based on the staff, the appropriate staff, to work with the students to support the programs versus the actual budgets. And you gave several examples of that. I mean, do we hire one experienced teacher? Do we hire two newer teachers? Do we have to worry about transportation? All of those kind of budgeting things that fall under student-based budgeting that we don't really want our principals to be doing. We want them to be focusing on classroom work and educating our students. So, I really appreciate this, the summary of this. And I just wanted to make that point that, um, this, what we, we do this for a reason. We centralize these things for a reason to allow for that parity and that equity and allowing the professionals to do their educating and we'll manage the business operations.
That's exactly what the CADDY report was refer, one of the examples of what the CADDY report was referring to eleven or twelve years ago when they said we were a district of schools and a school district.
You know, the other thing too, Paula, to your point is, it, there is plenty of opportunity for our building-level staff to give suggestion, to lead, to guide, to talk about their needs. But you really break down the economy of scale when you put resources into a singular school versus being able to, you know, to maximize the impact through an economy of scale. And so, it's, it's, not only the quality of our decisions are stronger, but we are able to stretch the resources much further. Thanks for bringing that up.
Yeah, no, that's, that's a point well made. Um, all right. Any other, um, questions? Comments? All right. Otherwise, I'll ask for a motion to approve, uh, the demonstration of compliance.
So moved.
By Dick?
Second.
By Paul? She was louder. Uh, and, uh, I'll ask Amory to call for the vote.
Sure. All right. Uh, Ms., or Dr. Marty?
Yes.
Ms. Pierce?
Aye.
Ms. Ragland?
Yes.
Ms. Seacrest?
Aye.
Ms. Cisco?
Aye.
And Mr. Smith?
Yes. All right. Um, do we have any discussion items?
We do not.
Joey just foreclosed any for discussion items? No, anybody else?
I, yeah, I wanted to share one thing.
Yeah.
Just, uh, really wanna thank Jackie and Deana and Mark for coordinating and organizing with the principals these graduation walks.
Yeah.
They've really been powerful. It just accentuates the systems approach because you can see the pre-K through twelve and now fourteen. So I think that that's a really powerful visual for people to really make sure, make that link between what happens and how important those transitions are.
Incredible.
It really is. And we had a great graduation today at, uh, our life skills program. And that was outstanding. And we've got, I think, Columbine tomorrow night and, and we'll do global online and get into Saturdays and we're looking forward to it. So it's a pretty fun time right now.
Yeah, I know it's not our last, um, uh, meeting of the school year, but, uh, what a terrific year this school district has had thanks to the work of a, hard work of a lot of folks. I mean, uh, I, I just, I really do like the, the tagline, academic excellence by design. Nothing happens by accident in the district. And, and, and the level of coordination that you see across the district at every level, it's just so exceptional. Everybody working together for the same purpose. It's just really remarkable. So, um, I, I know it's not our last meeting of the year, but it, but with school ending tomorrow, right? And then graduation Saturday, it seems appropriate to really thank everyone for all their hard work and just an exceptional school year. And we should congratulate the class of twenty eighteen, none of whom are here tonight, but, uh, and I doubt that too many. I wouldn't, I wouldn't guess that the ratings among that, uh, particular, uh, demographic are all that high for this TV program. Nevertheless, uh, we, we do congratulate them and we'll do that Saturday in person.
And we thank operations for getting it all set up.
Oh, my gosh. Yeah, yeah. With no particular prospects of rain. Dare I say, dare I say that? Don't say that. Well, last year was, okay, very good. All right, I won't say it. All right. Well, with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
That's enthusiastic.
We're out.
And, uh, second by?
Karen.
By Karen? And, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you.